Good evening, we'll call our meeting to order. Ms. Steele, if you please, call the roll.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll stand for our invocation, our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Kenneth Gibson.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a local governing body to address the issues that are important to our county. Lord, equip us with wisdom, help us to work together in good faith to make good decisions this evening. Pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We'll have the approval of our minutes from March the 4th, March the 17th, and March the 18th.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
We have the adoption of our agenda.
So moved, second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no consent agenda tonight. Matters presented by the board. Yes, sir, Dr. Orth.
Nothing serious. I had an interesting conversation with one of my constituents, Better Landfill. And we were just walking through the history of the landfill and some of the issues that were related to the adoption of, you know, where it was going to go. But it was interesting when we talked about what revenue we get. Now, we haven't talked about the landfill and the contract. I know, Mr. Bizani, you've mentioned a few things before about the contract, but just to double check, they pay us a little over $700,000 a year, and they take care of all of our stuff. But I don't know whether we want to do this sometime in the near future before next budget is to really talk about the landfill. And one of the, I think, one of the things that Marie was telling me is that, and I know Chris, Mr. Hudson, talked about this before, changing the way things are, the tonnage. So we may see the landfill filling up faster than we had expected. So it's just something maybe in the fall, when we have some time, just talk about the landfill and see how that contract is negotiated, whether we could renegotiate and whether... Anyway, I thought, Mr. Bizani...
This is sweetheart.
So, yeah, it just was a conversation because of how our trash was dealt with years ago and then with, you know, the place that's behind the old Walmart, what's happened to that. So anyway, just something to think about for the fall when we have a, you know, a few free moments.
Any other matters presented by the board? Seeing none, county administrators items.
I have a few, so I'm glad it's a short agenda. But I would like to just comment back on Dr. Orth's comment if I can. As we're talking about the comp plan and everybody's been concerned about growth and what that's going to mean, I haven't had a chance to go back to look through the existing comp plan. But it kind of dawned on me, have we figured out the capacity? So in other words, as we add population, and especially when you look at a larger subdivision coming in, do we need to have an additional convenience center and what obligation? So again, I think it's a great topic to bring up, and it might be that there are some things that need to be done that, you know, because I know I've waited in long lines before, and if we have more people, they're going to be longer lines.
Marie was telling me how the money, how the negotiation is based on, I don't know, it might be good to have her here because she was talking to me about, about the way the contract is negotiated and tonnage and all that, so...
Well, and I think Mr. Baines is also pretty well-versed in that, and we can definitely do something in the fall and bring in, and also have the statistics on how we're doing. You all voted to allow them to change how they add things together so that they could have more at a certain time, and so that's the last thing that we've done to modify. So back to the county administrator items, I wanted to remind everybody from the public that we have the town hall coming up on May 28th at RCC to deal with data centers. There are a number of VDOT surveys going around, a couple of them, four of them, I guess, have passed, and now there's two more. So if people are seeing social media links to do these surveys, we really appreciate, and the state does too, people's input on their feelings about the roads and filling out those surveys.
Ms. Steele?
Yes.
Why isn't the venue, like I say, TC Walker? Why is it all the way up north in RCC, or nobody can get to it?
Well, the only location that is viable for a data center in the entire county is in the Glens area. So we felt it was appropriate to have, and this was something that the Planning Commission decided was to have it up there, similar to when we divided, you know, other meetings. And so the next one will be discussion at the Planning Commission meeting. So there'll be additional discussion, but the people who own property that would be the most impacted are up there, and so we felt it was appropriate to take it to them. But there will be other opportunities, and we're also looking at, hopefully, being able to videotape it. So if we can, then that can make it available to everyone.
Yeah, perhaps Ms. Cronin might want to poll the board, see who's going to be there, because I know if we have more than two, you know, you have to make it right.
We have advertised that three of you may be there, just in to...
I really hope all of you will make it, or if you can, because I think it's, it's going to be a very informative meeting, and I think it would be important to kind of hear the feedback afterwards. So then, the last thing on kind of the public comments is the Working Waterfront Survey, which has been ongoing ends the end of this month. If people would like to provide input on that, they can get to the county's website and take that survey. Now, I always love to share good news, and I'm sure Mr. Crisco and others who are aware of this, but just to pass it on for the public. First of all, kudos, this is dealing with DEQ grants, and I think some of the largest ones that have come to the county, and we're often missed, so it's nice to see some funds coming through. And I want to give kudos to Louis Lawrence, because I know he works closely with, on two of these, and the PDC supporting them. So the first one is the largest one, a $6.8 million grant for oyster restoration, has been awarded to the Oyster Company of Virginia. And they will be restoring oyster reefs, about 57 acres worth of oyster reefs. This is not for harvesting, this is for cleaning up the water, and there will potentially be some of that later on, but it's a long-term commitment and a really good thing for our waterways. And in fact, let me also just say, this is the, these are, it was $19 million awarded in grand total for the state to reduce water pollution in the Chesapeake Bay. The second grant, which the PAA will be one of the recipients, is an interesting one. It's a $499,800 grant for urine diversion and treatment for nitrogen removal. And this is with the Lixiel Company, and they will be doing, they have a proprietary toilet that has a nitrogen filtering system for urine, and a lot of interesting facts about how high in nitrogen or urine is. And there will be five commercial demonstration sites and 11 households. So we are anticipating being asked and looking at, I think they have some of the addresses already.
They're going to demonstrate the toilets?
They're going to give the toilets to the people, and then...
Public demonstration.
Yes. And then the last grant, which I know y'all will be very pleased with, the Hampton Road Sanitation District applied for a grant, which Ms. Leggs supported with a letter of support. And that is for $1.8 million to help get more people hooked up to HRSD. And it's an incentive grant to defray some of the cost, and where homeowners could get up to $5,000 of the fees waived. And they're anticipating 236 homes in Gloucester County being able to be connected, is what they're aiming for. So all good news, and good news for Chesapeake Bay, too.
The question on that second grant, are these toilets, or are they whole systems to replace the septic tanks?
My understanding, they are toilets, and when I looked at, it has like a, its own filtering type separate system that, I'm assuming it's like one of those two-button type toilets where you can have the one or the two buttons on the top. But it shows a vertical filtering system that is something that's completely different, and then the septic tank is like normal.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
On the toilets, thank you, Ms. Steele. At this time, we'll move on to our public comment period. We ask that you just limit your conversations to the topics on the work session agenda only. Please limit your conversation or your remarks to three minutes or less. Public comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. First of all, Mr. Hudson, when you called me a couple of weeks ago and we talked about agenda items, and everything's out of tonight's agenda, so I have no copies for you. So I'm going to be speaking to your documents out of tonight's agenda. Specifically, I'm talking about the resolution for the TAP grant. There's two or three things that I would like to ask you to, to at least talk about when you get ready to discuss it. In reading over the information, and I'm speaking to the attached schematic or the drawing that was, not the drawing, but the document that's in your, your package, it has a date of October of '24 on it. I have to admit, I don't recall the discussion about this grant before tonight. If there is, would you please inform me, because I missed that. But I noticed on there that the A&E fees are $100,000, construction is $2.9 million, for a total cost of $3 million, with the county funds at $500,000. The reason I bring that up is because in the second paragraph of your summary, it talks about 80% of the $3 million being covered by the grant, up to a maximum of $2.5 million, and the county providing 20%. Well, my calculator figures that $500,000, which is mentioned in here, would not be correct. The actual figure would be $600,000, and if I'm wrong, then I'm asking you to please clarify that in your discussion. It's quite intriguing, because there is a reoccurring, reoccurring cost of up to $10,000 a year. With all due respect, if you're going to spend up to $500,000 or $600,000, I would encourage you to at least put that toward the water system. Yes, this is a grant, yes, it's for tourism, and there's nothing wrong with that. But you're basically building a sidewalk underneath the bridge to cross Tindall Park or to connect Tindall Park with the beach. Again, there's nothing wrong with that. But I would equate that to the analogy of if my house was falling down and I wanted a new car, which is more important? Shore up my house. I'm suggesting to you to shore up utilities department with whatever funding may be there and available. Because if you look, whether it's $500,000 or $600,000, gentlemen, that's a penny on the real estate, and that's reoccurring, reoccurring cost, which is not added here. The second thing I would like to ask you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, in reading over your agenda, in paragraph two of your whereas, it talks about the 80% funding and the 20% in local match. I would encourage you to be more specific in funding, because we all know, costs rise. Your 20% may become far more of a larger increase in when this goes to, if you decide to do this in FY '28. I would just respectfully ask that you consider those topics or those concerns when you bring them up during your discussion. Thank you.
Diane Jones from the Ware District. Your only work session agenda is that sidewalk you want to build under the bridge. However, Teresa brought up the fact that you should divert money toward the water company. I just want to give praise to the water company tonight, since the subject has been introduced. I had, my neighbor had a sewer and water line behind my house that broke. The sewer line has been bad since the owner, current owner, was a little girl and her father owned the house. They worked tirelessly from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night to make sure that that woman had sewer service before they went home. And a person who goes, they only have six people in the county that do that kind of work. Six people. If you want a job at the water company, you start at $17 an hour. Come on, y'all. And you want to pay whatever for a sidewalk? Come on. When the police are getting a 3% raise, actually, they're not. Blue Cross Blue Shield gets a 3% raise. Not the police, not the fire department. I mean, there's no wisdom in what you're doing. If I was younger and had the strength, I would have a petition out to remove every last one of your little blessings, all of you. Because you're crazy. You don't know how to manage money.
Mr. Chair, if I may...
Yes, you may.
The speaker's out of order on multiple points. First of all, it's not a matter that's on the agenda.
Correct.
Second of all, these are personal attacks which are not appropriate.
I did not personally attack anyone.
This is not a matter that's on the agenda, so, Mr. Chair, my suggestion is that you cut Ms. Jones off.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jones.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Catherine Carter from Abingdon District. I feel like my rights have been infringed, and I want to remind you of the contracts that you have signed, sworn oaths, solomos before God to support. They're called constitutions. And a lot of people think common law is not written. These are the two contracts, United States Constitution and the Agenda Bill of Rights. Definition, Black's Law, Dictionary Constitution.
Mr. Chair, ma'am, may I?
Yes, sir.
Unless this is a matter on the work session agenda, it's out of order.
I have a right to speak on, to have unrestrained freedom of speech.
No, ma'am, you don't.
So where in the Constitution does it say I don't?
Mr. Chair, I suggest that you rule her out of order unless she wants to talk about something on the work session agenda, she should be asked to sit down.
Article 1, Section 12 says...
Ma'am.
...freedoms of speech and other press...
We don't want to have that court today.
...are among the great forests of liberty and can never be restrained.
Mr. Chair, do you want the sheriff to escort her to her seat?
Ms. Carter? Thank you. Any further comments, public comments? Okay, now we'll move on to the work session agenda. Ms. Steele?
The first item, Mr. Lewis is going to be presenting, and I'll probably, I may jump in.
Mr. Brian Lewis, I'm sorry. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to discuss the project from Tindles Point Park to Gloucester Point Beach Connector. As some of you've already heard, this project will, let me start. The project will, will begin at Tindles Point Park, continuing down the bluff adjacent to Coleman Bridge. Then it will turn underneath the Coleman Bridge to the parking lot at Great Road across from Gloucester Point Beach, which, just as an FYI, I'm sure you all know, is the only public beach in the county. The connection that will then tie into the Great Road Pedestrian Improvements Project to Lafayette Heights Drive. This project, the Great Road Pedestrian Improvements Project, is currently under design and is anticipated for construction in FY 2027. The trail is approximately 1,900 feet long by eight feet wide, and will provide access for both pedestrians and bicycles. The trail will also include an observation deck where residents can stop and enjoy the view of the York River. County staff has had several conversations with representatives from both VDOT and VIMS, because the trail is planned to be located within the VDOT right-of-way and adjacent to VIMS facilities. The goal of this project is to make the entire area more accessible to the public by offering another option rather than crossing Route 17. Here are some renderings that we have of, of the proposed location. As you can see, this starts up at the Tindles Point Park, comes down, it crosses under the bridge, and goes to that parking lot. Here's another rendering of what it may look like under the bridge. That's the lagoon that was built with the widening of the bridge back in the day. And here's another rendering. And then talking a little bit about the funding, and I will kind of modify this a little bit. Let me see. The project is currently shown in the five-year CIP and fiscal year 2028, as shown in the attachments. We are interested in submitting an application for a grant from VDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program. The grant will cover 80% of the project cost, up to a million, up to a maximum of $2.5 million, with the county providing a minimum match of 20%. And the reason, the max, maximum amount of $2.5 million is what the federal government is willing to pay. That is, that is their match. So that's why that's in there. You know, staff will continue to look for ways to reduce cost by looking for more efficient and low-maintenance projects, products, rather, for the project. What we're asking tonight is, is to be able to submit the pre-application, which is due May 30th, 2025. If the pre-application is deemed viable, VDOT will notify the county that a full application may be submitted by September 15th for final consideration. So at this point, nothing is committed. I guess the recommendations that we have tonight are to request the board's support of the project and select second, consider adoption of the proposed resolution. And although brief, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Mr. Chair, can I just add a couple of comments based, again, on some of the earlier statements made? Mr. Lewis attended a meeting with VDOT, and the $600,000 figure is correct. That was an oversight from when the CIP was put in, that it just took the 80/20 and didn't take the 20% of the total project. In-kind is, in-kind contributions are allowed, and so that and actually pricing out the, the project will modify the cost some. It is an expensive project. I'm not, I don't think we're trying to, you know, say, oh, it's only going to cost a million dollars. It's an expensive one that's flood-proof, ready-to-go, will be there, long-lasting with concrete. It doesn't have all the maintenance issues that wood and other materials have. And this is a, just for the public's purpose too, it's a Transportation Alternative Program grant. So the idea, again, is, as Mr. Lewis said, is to keep people from trying to cross 17 and maybe, and children on cars, and they're doing that now. We do see children on bikes and things, not, we've seen them at Walmart. I can't say I've seen any bikes down there, but I've definitely seen people crossing the street, and this would allow a safer way. There will also be a pedestrian crossing going in to make it where they could do an entire loop. And I think that's it. Just to further reiterate before you all ask questions, is that this is a preliminary application. So this is just to allow us to do the initial application and see if the project is worthy of VDOT. Something that's been talked about, in fact, the first time I applied for this was probably in the 1990s. So it's been around in discussion for a long time. Thank you.
Has there been a more recent estimate on the cost?
We worked on a estimate within the last two weeks.
So we're still at the $3 million?
We're going to make the $3 million is the goal. You know, again, by looking at different materials, you know, and we know that by '27, '28, costs are going to increase. We are also going to be looking for in-kind funds.
So for the in-kind, will that meet the 20%?
Yes, could potentially. It just depends on, and/or more, hopefully.
Mr. Bizani?
My, my view on this is just, this is just nothing but a bridge to nowhere. I'm just kind of wondering why VDOT has a sudden interest in Tindles Point Park, where there's, you never see anyone there. Is this to connect people to go to Tindles Point Park? Where, where did VDOT get the sudden interest in connecting Tindles Point Park to the beach?
First off, yes, well, it's not really VDOT, it's us asking VDOT for this grant. You know, VDOT didn't even know about this until...
Okay, well, then I'll turn the question around. Where was our sudden interest in us connecting the Tindles Point Park to the beach?
I think going...
When you have access to Tindles Point Park on the other side. So we're, this is $3 million...
Correct, I understand.
...of my tax money being used to build a bridge essentially to nowhere.
Right.
So you said that the design is currently under, you're still, it's still being designed?
No, the Great Road Pedestrian Improvements Project is under, I'm sorry if that was...
So this project's not going to take effect until 2028, which we all know will be overcome by inflationary costs and will be much more than what it is now.
Correct.
Right?
Well, potentially, but that's, and we took that into the estimate most recently.
My, my thing, my view is, there's plenty of views of the York River. If you just walk down, you know, walk down the Great Road and go to the, go to the edge where the boat landing is, there's plenty of views of the York River. I don't think you need another place to view the York River. I think it's just a simple waste of taxpayer dollars. And so what I would propose is, if we're going to spend $600,000, up to $600,000, let's use it for the utility department. Let's, let's improve that. That's the more critical need than a bridge going from one side of the bridge to the, to the other. That seems more, you know, a better way to spend our money. I think this is just a, just a bad project to consider.
And let me just say, this project is re-in the five-year CIP, which I assume you guys saw, you looked at. That, we're just trying to move along potential opportunities for funding that's outside of what the county would have to pay for.
I would kindly suggest taking it and putting it in the bottom of the list.
Ms. Steele?
I understand the hesitancy and have read the public, some of the public comments have been made. I'm not trying to argue those, I just want to make sure that people understand the value of things. And I know I personally walked and have walked many times the, what used to be the Visitor Center to the Victim Center Walk. When Yorktown put in that long, safe walkway... When Yorktown put in that long, safe walkway, it became an exercise area for many people. We don't have anything like that. Part of the reason of the impetus for this now versus other times is knowing that we are leading up to the 2031 commemoration. Next year, we start with 250th year, and we've already had programs, but it's like a perfect time in our mind to go for this program so that by the time the ships from France and everywhere else are here, we've got a beautiful walkway that helps facilitate exercise and, again, in a safe, mobile way. At the, Tindles Point does not have very many parking places, so not many people get to go there. So this was another thing that you could park at the beach and walk over there, or vice versa. When we talk later on in June about economic development and look at Gloucester Point, there are, the idea of the Gloucester Point plan is to make it a more walkable setting, more, feel like, more like a village. And there are a lot of residents that are on that side of the water. And with what VIMS is doing with their brand-new building that they'll be putting in that's next to Tindles Point, this gives people an opportunity to walk to work, to walk for recreation. So it is a high price. We paid a lot of money for the sidewalks out here, too. Back years and years ago, when they did that walkway, it was over a million dollars back then. And they also received TAP grant funds. So I'm not, I don't think, the board has to make these decisions. And I don't want to, I guess, put this up against utilities because I think that there'll still be continued discussions about utilities that you all have set, that you'll be discussing later on, once the taxes start coming in. So we would ask that you let us apply, but if you absolutely do not believe this is a good project to pursue for tourism or for whatever, then I agree with Mr. Bizani. It should come off of the capital improvement list and should not be there.
Mr. Hudson?
With VIMS's new building, would they be willing to help with the 20%?
I don't, I think the main thing that they've said is they'll let us use their property for staging. And to be able to build, you have to be on their property. And they've said that they would work with us on that.
What new building are you talking about, down by the boat basin?
Yes. Mr. Lewis has gotten a copy of their designs and how it's going to look. And I think I've mentioned to the board before that the building will be built into the bank.
Right.
And so the road that's currently kind of hard to see that's down there now would become a driveway up to their parking lots up the top of the hill.
So Ms. Steele, if we apply for this grant and we were to get it, there's nothing saying that we have to do it?
Correct.
Okay, that's, it comes back. I just wanted to make that clear.
It would come back another time for the September application. And with that would be the resolution that would actually have the dollar figures. We talked about whether we needed a resolution or not for tonight, but we thought it would be very clear that, you know, I think that was the board's preference to have one for tonight. It's not required for our application. So it would come back. The risk is if the board's completely dead-set against it, then we don't want to spend our staff time on it. If the board thinks it's, let's stick our toe in the water and see if VDOT likes it. Because we don't know what kind of competition we're going to be up against yet. And then if it, if it does well, then, and we're doing our job of trying to make it as small as it can be, as well as looking for either other grants or donations, too. I don't think the donations would add up to much, but they might pay for some of the signage and things.
Yes. Let's go.
My other concern is, VDOT hasn't been a real good grant partner with us the last little bit. And my other concern is, while this money's currently available, we don't know if it'll be available in 2028 for any type of grant-funded projects with the way things are going at the federal level. Fiscally, I don't think we're in a position to wade any further into this right now because we have very tight budgets and no excess funds available that if we were to go forward with this and then get it, and everyone's like, oh, it's, you know, it feels good or it doesn't feel good, whatever. I just don't think, fiscally, we have the funds available to pursue this any further.
Okay. I've got very mixed feelings about this one. And I see both sides of the coin. But I'm tending to agree with Mr. Bizani and Mr. Crisco regarding fiscal responsibility, given the major unknowns about the general economy, you know, where we're going to be going with our budget. I hate to have to wait, waste staff time on this. I'm all for tourism, but I do know we have a lot of other needs. You know, people ask about pickleball courts. How many people, we've didn't hear much about that this past year, but we know people want pickleball courts. We probably have more people using pickleball courts than possibly walking from Tindles Point to the beach. So my feeling is I'd rather just put this aside and think about a lot of other things. Now, I know the utilities has come up, and you know me, I am all for utilities. I hear it all the time. Every morning at the gym, I hear it. So I would be probably tending to vote against this tonight.
So is that a motion to put the $600,000 to utilities?
Mr. Koschel?
Mr. Chair, there, there's more people that read our agendas than most people think. And so it's been a hot-button issue in my district. As you know, county water runs through quite a bit of my district. And like Dr. Orth and others, I think that's a great idea. I'm wheelchair-bound. It would be nice to be able to go down the sidewalk. But at the end of the day, money's tight. And I just, with the public utility need, I just don't feel comfortable going, voting for this tonight.
Yes, sir.
You said Mr. Lewis had, they're building another building at the boat basin right there, putting a new building?
VIMS will be, yes.
So what would, you know, we don't know how William &amp; Mary will feel about perhaps watching all these people come and walking through the boat basin. They may restrict passageway. They may say, no, it's not safe for you to come down here. We've got too many things going on. What's to restrict William &amp; Mary from saying enough's enough?
We've already.
We'll be in the VDOT easement right away. We're staying off of William &amp; Mary and VIMS's property, other than to possibly during construction. That would be the only time. They might be next to it, and that's why we've engaged them and had those conversations.
We've been in discussion with us for over a year with them.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Gibson?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for your presentation. I just had a couple of questions, and this could be for you and Ms. Steele. But I know we had, there was at least, under consideration, a grant for the improvement of the Gloucester Point Beach Park. And how would this potentially work together with that grant if that were approved?
If we had gotten that grant and we still may be able to find one, well, there's, let me say, the one grant that is still out there that's just for the beach, that is dealing with the shoreline only. But the grant that we applied for that we did not receive, which would have done the master planning and redoing the whole Gloucester Point Beach, I think they would just go tongue-in-groove. I mean, you know, a beautiful new fishing pier, a new raised boardwalk, the new restrooms, all those things. If we had received those funds and then you'd have this extended walkway. Again, I think people are walking around, maybe they don't want to go swimming anymore, then go for a walk, and it gives them a place to go. So I think, I think they would have done very well together. And if those kind of grant opportunities come up again, we will be pursuing them as much as the board will allow us to.
Would this walkway make us more attractive for future grants if this was put in place as a complement to those upgrades to the park?
I think it shows a commitment to improving Gloucester Point from an aesthetic and a recreational use as well as tourism. And so, yes, I think it would show that that kind of commitment is there and the desire to build out and make a much nicer facility than what we currently have.
And is there any possibility of increased parking at the Tindles Point Park or at any property within walking distance of this walkway?
The one area that we have discussed in the past is the area behind the building. So as you go across towards Yorktown and you see the small, little building, the area that's behind the building, it hasn't been fully explored archaeologically, but it is an area that's an old drain field. So it's probably been disturbed enough when it used to be a restaurant down there and other things. So that, we had talked about being able to put in even school buses back there at one point.
Okay. Ms. Chair, if I can, I just had a few comments. I don't have any other questions. But I certainly sense the mood of the board regarding this issue. But I don't, I don't think this is an either-or. You either vote for this or you are hurting utilities. As I think the board recalls, we've made the very tough decision to increase the utility rates, which addresses utilities. We all, I think, reached a consensus that if there's any, quote, windfall after the adjustment to the tax rates, that we would strongly consider using that money towards utilities. So we are absolutely addressing it. We want to address it, and it has to be addressed, as I've said in many meetings. And I can certainly agree with the consensus of the board on this issue. However, all I will say is, just moving forward, I would ask that all of us not reflexively reject considerations for the improvement of Gloucester Point Beach and the Parks and Rec system. There just seems to be this consistent undercurrent of criticizing Parks and Rec, criticizing any potential improvements to Gloucester Point Beach, throwing out accusations. We're just trying to put up a hot dog stand. I mean, you compare our beach to that of York County, and it is night and day. If you took, if you looked at the population or the count of people who are enjoying restaurants and walking around at the Yorktown area, it blows away anybody who is using our public, our public beach access. And if we want to bring in additional tourists who can pay tax revenue and if we want to provide a better option for our own residents, who are often complaining, we don't have anything to do. We don't have anywhere to take our children. We want a better fishing pier. These are all things that we're going to have to proactively take steps to address and rather than listen to the knee-jerk negativity and no way of every single option that comes up. We need to be open to improvement. We need to have some forward vision of improving that area. And we can't just keep saying, no, 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 every time we try to improve this area. So I understand where the board's coming from right now, but I just ask that we give this a little bit more consideration for options like this in the future.
Ms. Chair, thank you. Mr. Gibson, just so you are aware, the Yorktown Beach area, they have some luxuries that we don't have. When I was a chairman here several years ago, Tommy Norman put in the extra occupancy tax for the historic triangle. And some of that money is, goes to that beach down there because they have the extra one cent in Yorktown, James City County, and the city of Williamsburg. I actually asked them to allow us to be included in that because we were the fourth leg, you know, with everything that happened. Battle of the Hook was told, thanks, no thanks, you don't matter. Because they have a revenue stream that helps them do these type things in those areas. And, you know, we were, we were left out because we didn't have enough here to be at that table at that time. And, you know, I thought it was a bad play then. I still think it's a bad play. But again, fiscally, this is just not something that I can support at this time. And if this grant becomes available or is available again at some other point in time, my stance would probably be different because I think it would be an interesting, an interesting addition to that part of the county. Future state when, fiscally, we're in a better position.
Mr. Bizani?
So remind me again, Ms. Steele, who is responsible for maintaining the boat landing there? Is that VDOT's responsibility or some other organization again?
Department of Wildlife Resources is responsible for the boat landing that's right underneath the pier, and that's the one that I've been.
Corresponding with you all about, that they are redoing the entire park. Yes, yes. They're redoing it all, and it's just way behind on the schedule. And therefore, people are still hitting the potholes and things.
Thank you.
The other landing is the county's.
And that's the one that sands in all the time?
Which, if we get the other grant from DCR to address the shoreline, it should be fixing that.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Lewis? You know, if you were to submit the application, how many man-hours would you be looking at to get it done?
It'd be quite a few. I mean, I have very limited time, so I'd have to get it done. But I would say probably at least 20 hours, maybe 30. Because one of the other things that I'll have to do, and we're going to do it anyway, just in case something like this comes up in the future, you have to have something called, for VDOT's world, a qualified personnel. Unfortunately, the only person in the county that is, has that status is on an extended leave. So by May 30th, I have to also become qualified as well.
Dr. Orth?
I appreciate Mr. Gibson's comments regarding things that we can do to improve that part of the county. I think it's very difficult to compare Yorktown Beach with York, with our beach. You know, we have very limited ability to do anything with that beach because we're surrounded literally by VIMS property. The thing that we should do, which is the grant that you were hoping to get, is the master plan to really do something with that entire area. That's where I think would make a huge difference in bringing people. I don't think that a walkway at this time, while nice, it's an extra. I think focusing on what we can do to make that area more amenable to more people and make it where people feel safe swimming. You know, again, the area is very limited. It's not a big area like Yorktown Beach. And I just think, you know, the timing is not right. Now, the other is that it'd be interesting, the hotel is for sale, correct, right now?
That's a topic we're going to bring up in June. Yes, it is.
And there's a possibility if that, that came through, negotiations could possibly be considered for, you know, having them include something like that. I mean, I think there are lots of other opportunities for this type of project in the future. But my sentiment is, right now, the timing is not right for this county.
Any other discussion? Other discussion? So we, uh, so we don't, no action?
No actions required.
No action required. Okay. Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item B, another work session, comprehensive plans, committee appointment. I see we have some names for the Petsworth District?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I nominate John LaRue.
All together or just one in task?
Yeah, this is the last mid-dission, but I'd like to nominate Mr. Randy Burek for the Abbotin position for the committee.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor? We'll do them all together? We'll both of them together?
Aye.
Aye.
As have it. So that's Mr. John LaRue and Mr. Randy Burek.
By the way, in addition to that, I have been talking with an individual for the Planning Commission for the Abbotin District. I should hopefully have that nomination available for our June meeting. But a young individual that's moved back into the county, young family, could be the youngest member on the Planning Commission. I'm planning to meet with him Thursday or Friday. He, I think he's very interested. I just think he needs, he wants a little more information about the Planning Commission. I think Mr. Hudson and I, we're going to try to get together with him, one evening with him.
All right, that's all we have on our work session, agenda, supervisor discussion. Any supervisor discussion? No supervisor discussion, no close of meeting, and one thing left.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting. Meeting.